Motion carries four zero with one abstained from council member or ma- from Mayor Pro Tim Amparano.
Here.
And Mayor Burner, here. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Athan, would you lead us, please?
Ready, begin.
I have a flag on United States of America and to the public who stands one nation in this law created in this justice
Mr. Marina, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, no, no adjustments to the agenda.
Thank you. Mrs. Turner, do we have any reportable action from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session at conference with legal counsel regarding Gutierrez versus City of Imperial. Direction was given to council. The council also discussed Holler versus City of Imperial claim. Direction was given to council. We also discussed claim number three zero four four three eight eight. Direction was given to council. The council discussed public employee performance evaluation of the city manager. The council discussed conference with real property regarding four twenty South Imperial Avenue. Direction was given to the negotiator regarding price and terms. The council did not talk about item D. And the council did not, or the council did discuss one item of initiation of litigation. And direction was given to council. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment for matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address the city council concerning any item with the city, within the city council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At that time, state your name and address for the record. There are, the mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentation. Do we have anybody here for public comment tonight? Seeing none, we'll move on to item A consent agenda. All items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, the item will be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. Do we have a motion for a close or a consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I have a motion by Obase Martinez and a second by Tucker. Please vote. Motion carries four zero with one abstained from council member or ma- from Mayor Pro Tim Amparano. So moving on to items B, B one or public hearing items, B one. Public hearing to consider recommendation of the planning commission regarding the Victoria Ranch specific plan amendment. And with, and I'll open this hearing at seven seventeen P M. And Mr. Moore, if you could give us the staff report, please.
Good evening, council. Um, some you may already know that developers submitted a specific plan for Victoria Ranch and annexation application in two thousand and three where he proposed three hundred and twenty acre mixed use development project to include residential, commercial and community facility land uses. The specific plan was adopted by the City of Imperial back in December seventeenth, two thousand and three. And the annexation was approved by LACCO on July twenty second, two thousand and four. In two thousand and eight, the Victoria Ranch specific plan was amended primarily as it related to a change in zoning designation for the original unit for aid development. In this twenty twenty three is based on the amendments to the original adopted and previous amendment as it relates to land use designations for units for A, five A, six A, and four B. The overall footprint of the project site remains the same. There are no material changes that it relates to the project's sites, overall land use assignment and land use densities, which are the primary factors in assessing environmental impacts. On Wednesday, October eleventh, two thousand and twenty three, the planning commission reviewed and recommended approval to the council. And as staff recommends approval of specific plan amendment. And I'll step for any questions that you may have.
Do you have anybody from here to make a public comment on this? With that, I'll close the public comment hearing or the public hearing at seven nineteen and we'll move on to council discussion. Do you have any questions, comments, or a motion from the council?
I'll second.
Emma motion by Amparano and a second by Tucker, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Now we'll move on to C action items. Item C one, discussion and authorization to sign the Imperial irrigation district encroachment permit application number A dash two thousand and twenty three dash zero zero five nine regarding the Morning Star Apartments with Athan Moore.
Good evening, council. Um, the developer's done his construction is submitting an encroachment permit application with the Imperial irrigation district for the Morning Star Apartments currently under construction along laboratory road. The purpose of the encroachment permit is to cross the I I D Eastman located along laboratory road to install two water lines crossing over the Dahlia Canal pipeline at two locations, twelfth street and fifteenth street. This couple of work also includes the connection of C Street Storm Drain Water Pipeline Outlet from the apartment complex to the I I D Tile Drain Number One. It has been requested by I D the City of Imperial need to sign the encroachment permit application as future owners of the utilities in order to commence the application review process. Um, staff recommends other session to sign I D enclosure permit application and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions, comments, or a motion, council?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Amparano, please vote.
Motion carries four zero with one abstained from council member Mendoza.
Item C two, discussion and related action regarding the acceptance of two public utilities easements over A P N number zero six three dash zero one zero dash zero two three zero six four or zero six three dash zero one zero zero six five and zero six three dash zero one zero dash zero six six with Athan Moore.
Evening, council. Um, an easement over where the hotel, the inner care and all the development will occur is needed for public utilities such as gas, electricity, telephone, and cable T V. Staff recommends the acceptance of two ten feet wide, hundred a thousand two hundred and seventy feet long grant of a public, public utility easements as described and illustrated on the reference exhibits and I'll stand for any questions that you may have.
Questions, council, or questions, comments, or a motion, council?
Second.
Emma motion by Mendoza and a second by Obase Martinez, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Item C three, discussion and any necessary action to appoint a City of Imperial representative to the initial board of directors of the Imperial Valley Healthcare District with staff report with city manager Dennis Marita.
Um, Madam Mayor and council, um, as, as we've all heard um, over the last several months, uh, the Assembly Bill on nine eighteen is now law. And uh, was signed by the governor on October eighth, which I think was a weekend. So the governor worked on a weekend. But anyway, uh, one of the things that it provides is the appointment of an interim board. Uh, and that board is charged with various tasks to get the entity off the ground. Um, of, of the list of, of, of entities who are eligible to make an appointment si- uh, includes the City of Imperial. So the City of Imperial, uh, Imperial can appoint one member to this, to this, uh, uh, initial board. Uh, and, um, we, we need to do so within sixty days from October the eighth. And so the schedule, and so I think the decision that this council needs to make is how do you want to go about doing that? The law, uh, as I read it does not specify, uh, the manner in which you go about making appointment. Other than saying that you can't be a current or former employee of El Centro Regional or Pioneer's Hospital pretty well leaves it to this council to decide what factors it wants to consider. I would say, uh, that if this council were to want to appoint one of your own, you're perfectly free to do that. If you, if you wish to, uh, if you wish to, uh, engage in application process, uh, uh, included in your agenda packet is, is a suggested form of application. Uh, by way of schedule, uh, I, um, one approach would be uh, for that application to be made available. Uh, also with some publication about the fact that the appointment is available. Uh, you'd have, we would have a closing date. And you, you have a regular meeting, I believe, that is sched- that is scheduled for one day before the deadline. Uh, so the sixtieth day falls on a Thursday, uh, which would be, uh, uh, one day after a council meeting. So if you wanted to have a process and make the appointment at that council meeting, then, uh, we could, uh, we can make that, make that happen. Uh, so if you give us direction, uh, to- tonight as to, uh, which direction would you like to go in that regard, we'll, we'll certainly, uh, carry that out.
Given the severity of what can happen for the rep- representative, represented, we need to make sure we've got someone on there that's got some some bite in them and some willing to stand up and study and do the work and know the law and know the consequences of any vote we take. So I think whatever decision is made, it's got to be someone who's going to meet those characteristics. I know we have one member on the council that would probably do that, but I don't think she's eligible.
As I would like to be on this board to help out our community and to see this come to fruition. Unfortunately, I have worked for both hospitals, so that omits me from applying. Sadly.
Councilmember Tucker has expressed interest in serving on the board. Or we can open up an application process we can do. Whatever.
Do we have any idea what type of meeting schedule that they anticipate or the amount of time?
This is gonna be, talking about the assembly members office, this is gonna be a few years. Um, so the first year will be to establish the bylaws and they have specific goals they have to meet. Then they will create districts. That means they're having to have an election. So the first year they're anticipating that you will have three districts up for two seat or up for three seats. And then you will have four the following two years later. So it's a few year commitment. It's not.
And whoever is appointed will be involved in the process of actually helping writing and creating and voting and
Be your representative for the city. Unless they're elected into one of those board posi- elected positions.
My understanding is it's literally to set up the voting structure. You will then have staff from both hospitals that will be advocating and you're kind of the voice of reason sitting on there.
And then whoever does, if they choose to want to apply and you are elected or appointed to this board, the initial board, you are, um, not allowed to run for the first election. So say, for instance, we put Athan, just saying. Athan cannot run for the election come when it's time for elections for the City of Imperial to be a representative for the hospital board. He would have to sit that one out and try again if he's so juiced.
But this person is not actually making the rules and bylaws and everything of the healthcare district. They're, they're as a representative to help set up the people that will be making the rules and guidelines and.
Yes. Therefore, I mean, they're, they're helping to get the funding, forming the, the foundation, so to speak. Um, but in turn, they will also be setting up the different districts and being representatives for their, their boards, meaning the Heffernan Board, Raleigh, you know, Pioneer's Memorial District, somebody from El Centro, the county, ours, Hoville. So big responsibility.
Uh, councilperson Mendoza, you, you asked about meetings. I, I don't see in the law that it says you're going to meet the first and third Wednesdays of the month, for example. It does have a list of tasks, uh, which include making a recommendation about the fine permanent fu- uh, funding that would be put to the voters, uh, the district aspect of it. uh the district aspect of it, um and and interestingly, it says, um one of their duties will be to create a staggered term for the board and and some of those, which means that some of this initial board will serve past the first district election. So in that regard, there'd be some continuity. So in any case, there isn't a a minimum number of meetings, but just looking at the list of tasks, uh I I would think it's gonna be a significant commitment from those folks that are selected, particularly with respect to funding. And I I would I would hope that that the staff people associated with this effort are gonna be uh making appropriate recommendations in that regard.
So can we make the recommendation that we put out an application for this and knowing that we as a council have to vote on it within? Does it have to be at the next meeting or?
Oh no, we can go the first meeting in December because it's by December seventh.
Yeah, what's the first meeting in December? Um looking at my calendar.
I did the arithmetic right, your first regular meeting in December is a day before the sixtieth day. So you'll you would need to make a decision on that day if you if and and that's taking into I my in terms of coming up with a schedule, given the Thanksgiving holiday, if we tried to make the 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 meeting before, unless you want to have a special meeting, the meeting before December sixth would be November fifteenth and that seemed like pretty tight, even if we got it out on the street tomorrow, uh that would leave not much time for people to apply and have it on your agenda for November fifteenth, that's how we landed on the sixth.
And we have it out. I mean, get it out ASAP, meaning like tomorrow if possible, and then have them do, I mean, November thirtieth? That way it can go on the agenda by December sixth, if you think that's too unreasonable.
Um. I would hope we could get it out this week. We will do our best to get it out tomorrow, but certainly I would want to get it out before the weekend.
Yeah.
Uh and um yeah, November, I think, I think in your s- in the staff report, we said twenty seventh, twenty seventh or the thirtieth, I think either one.
I was just thinking the twenty seventh is the weekend, the Monday after Thanksgiving.
Right.
So I feel like people might go, oops, I forgot and it's Thanksgiving, but it doesn't matter. Does that work? Should I have a motion? Or that's?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion by uh Tucker and a second by Al Perano, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Part of your packet included uh application, so if if between now and tomorrow or before we we actually put it out, if you have any comment, feel feel free to let us know.
Moving on to item C four, discussion and any necessary action regarding approval of a two-year service agreement with FirstNet for regular voice and data wireless service for public safety, uh staff report with Alex Estrada, I T Director.
Uh madam mayor and council members, with this item, uh we ask uh you to authorize a two-years agreement between the City of Imperial and FirstNet for wireless voice and data services. Although we're still waiting on the uh service agreement, we receive a quote um that describes the services and fees. The fees are very close to our existing provider, um and also part of the um backup material, I include the power presentation that they provide us of the that FirstNet provides for your consideration and review and uh I don't know if you're familiar with uh FirstNet, but FirstNet was uh is a network that was created by uh the government back on nine eleven and for um public safety, uh so again, the the fees are very similar and the order of quotes uh states one hundred and twenty devices, we are not gonna migrate everything once. So we're gonna be determining as as what is the the replacement uh schedule, if you will. And I would stop for any question that you may have.
Have any questions or comments or motion from the council?
I have uh FirstNet and it's a great um service, and so you have um capability to use your cell phone, your wireless devices anywhere, so I appreciate the move over, I mean, honestly, I could be in the mountains, I could be in the desert somewhere and I do have service, so.
Yeah, I didn't want to sound as a self-representative.
No, but I mean, somebody who uses it, like, yeah, it is a good service, so it'll be helpful if we need it when you guys are out and about.
Hey, and I agree, we just that we've had that conversation, um works on the border, doesn't recognize the border, doesn't, it works everywhere we go. Um as as a whole, uh my job, uh they're actually moving everybody over because there is a significant cost savings. Um both on the service, on what we get and ultimately on our phones, so we replace a phone every year almost free.
Uh the um this particular program uh or agreement is under another agreement umbrella, that is not like a NASPO agreement. So that allows us to uh get new phone lines for, they said, two years, but we can cancel the line at any time. The replacement, there is devices that are at practically at no cost, just paying the taxes as same as we have with uh our current service provider and again, I don't expect to have the one hundred and twenty devices uh replaced at once or everything before the end of this fiscal year. Uh so, but yeah, I think it will be a great improvement to the communication systems that we have.
Good move, being quarter for sure.
Yeah. Even with our public safety, they'll, you'll notice um that here in Imperial, there's a tower three blocks away. They they put it in there because there was complaints coming out of our facility, they didn't have service, now they have service instead of ten building where you didn't have anything, uh service is faster than actually our internet, so.
Right. But it could be noted too that we had a meeting with FirstNet um to look at as an option due to the cost savings that uh currently and even for the future that if we were to come up with a our own dispatch center somewhere down the line, um everything looked really well except the compatibility with all the other agencies from U two eight. That was the only thing that kind of caused pause, uh everything else was, uh I mean, if it was just us working for us, it would have been perfect, uh but we 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 kind of put it on hold. We haven't had a chance to speak with I T on it, but uh we we just put a pin in it, but it that service does seem to have a lot of um some of that nine eleven and all that is uh free of charge as well. It was set up all the frequencies, now um there is a really good redundancy that we can be looking at down the line, but for right now, it's, so we did have a conversation as well, so.
Uh don't forget that, um uh for years, Verizon was a pioneer in different things here in the valley. They were the ones that really had the 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 use and communication. And reason why the county back in those days decided to use Verizon for the backbone of the Spillman system uh and it's complicated to have that migration, I don't know whether the the county intentions on migrating those services to FirstNet or another size provider, unfortunately, um today's days is not really reliable to service around the the, I would say Imperial, so. But hopefully you can approve that.
A motion.
Second.
Of a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Al Perano, please vote.
Thank you, Alex.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Item C five, accept the state or approve, approve the two-year service agreement, wait, no, hold on. Accept the state F Y twenty-one twenty-two citizens' option for public safety, cops growth supplemental grant funding and authorize the use of funds to purchase forty-five equipment lockers and six new eight hundred megahertz police handheld radios and support accessories with interim chief of police, Michael Krenshaw.
Good evening, madam mayor and council, uh in front of you is every year, there's a uh cops grant that typically has a set price and then whatever uh partially through the year, whatever uh grant funding that doesn't get used is uh offered back to the agencies using them as a growth uh supplement. We happen to have this uh amount of money that was sitting there, it the expenditure is due by uh December. Um we found a need that fit and it was a suitable expenditure for this type of funding. Uh so I'm requesting um with the growth of our department and uh having a few extras for uh in case one goes down, we are looking to purchase some handheld radios. Um it should be noted that all the accessories for the radios, including all the uh programming and trunking and encryption is all included in this, uh so we won't have to come back for anything else. Um and I'll stand for any questions you may have.
I'm in a motion.
Second.
I'm a motion by Al Perano and a second by Tucker, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item D reports, D one, department reports, do we have any departments that have anything to report?
Can you guys hear me, uh? Hey, be ca- be careful what you ask for here, here I can. So um just real quick, uh I know we just had two back-to-back events, um the Fiesta and the Trunk or Treat, both of them really well attended um and successful. I want to thank uh all the departments that uh help us out and are involved in the uh logistics and operations of the events and um uh moving on, we have a movie at the park on November seventeenth at Eager. Um Barbie is what the citizens voted on. Um we have a series of movies that have been circulating via survey and uh we will have, we will release those as they come along, but Barbie is the first one at Eager on November seventeenth. And then as well, uh we have, coming down really quick, is our uh Parade of Lights on December eighth and then our uh Christmas in a Small Town, which is now in the daytime, uh December ninth. So uh very busy um next few months for uh the Parks and Rec staff. And again, I I I want to thank all the departments that help us come uh make all these things come to life.
Have any other department reports?
Uh yes, can you can you guys hear me? This is Kristen.
Yes.
All right, um so uh since our last meeting, we have uh two additional new hires. Uh and so our first new hire is um Fernando William Reyes, uh engineering technician inspector with community development. And then we also have, uh oh, there he is, Fernando, and then we have um Eve Fernando Turon, police officer uh with our police department. And we want to give them a warm welcome uh to the city. Uh and then I also wanted to uh mention that we had our employee engagement uh activities for Halloween uh and we had our office decorating um contest and our costume contest uh and a luncheon for the staff. And I want to thank all of the uh employee engagement committee members who helped plan and put on that event. And also thank you to our council members who were uh there to judge our competitions um and support the staff in their creativity, thank you.
Have any other department reports?
Quick, um Monday, we met with the uh the Imperial School District and to go over the school lockdown protocols, uh we were able to work uh through with them and we uh were able to use language that was consistent with uh I C O E. Tomorrow, we will have I C O E coming down to do a presentation for our supervisors to pass that along to the officers, so seems like we have it uh pretty well in hand at that point. And then today, the D A sponsored a fentanyl uh uh meeting where a committee is gonna be uh formed to uh looking at uh fundings uh both state and federal to help combat uh uh a very alarming rise in overdose to fentanyl, so uh we will be a a party to that as well, we'll be a part of that, so that's all. Uh so time change is coming soon and so this a it's an opportunity to remind everyone uh check the smoke alarms, uh check batteries, some people have the tenure batteries, so don't change the batteries, but check the smoke alarm, okay, if you have the tenure. Uh also, I wanted to to mention briefly, uh together, we formed a a committee within the department. Um it's called Community Risk Analysis Slash Standards of Cover Committee. Um been involved in a number of these and what it does and it's, I can't use, I can't take credit for this term, but what it does, it takes the emotion out of deployment and turns it, makes it a a an objective analysis and determination of what resources you send to what incidents. Um we will start with the, and speaking of Imperial County Fire, we're gonna start with the City of Imperial. Um and 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 the per- the reason why is that it's it's a smaller area, better than doing the whole county at once. Um and and it's a way to introduce uh um my folks to the to the process, uh because it's quite extensive. Um now, when would would this document, you know, this be done, I'm uh estimating twelve months. So it's gonna take that long to to go through this entire process um and and uh and actually have a published document that I can present to the city manager and then obviously at some point present to your council for, and we would give a presentation and uh answer any questions that you would have. And during the process, um we're gonna seek staff input and your input um on certain, in certain areas where we have questions.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to city manager report.
And a mayor, nothing for me this evening.
All right, and I'm gonna start to my right, council member Mendoza, do you have any reports?
Um just uh congratulations and thank you to the entire staff for another successful uh special event, the Dia Sanos Muertos, congratulations all to also to our mayor, Bernwardt, for a very wonderful State of the City address and it was, I received a lot of comments on it and it was very well received, so and good job on the staff.
I'm Obeso Martinez.
I was busy, I went to a ribbon cutting with the Imperial Valley Regional Chamber in Collexco at a First Imperial Credit Union, that was fun. Um I also attended the Trunk or Treat, which was very well attended, my brother had a truck. I think we handed out probably ten bags of candy, it was amazing to see such a great turnout for a first event. I mean, it was so well attended, all the kids were having fun, the parents were having fun, I mean, it was a really, really good event. So I'm excited to see such a good turnout for for that first time there and to see all the wonderful cars and everybody and then, of course, we had the Ben Holtz Carnival and I was even out at Glamis that weekend, I mean, I was busy. So Glamis was a zoo, if you guys go to Glamis, be safe out there, please, don't drink and drive because that's a whole other animal out there. Um but no, and I had the honor to go and see our beautiful and somewhat scary uh the, what do you guys, what do you guys calling them, the door decorating, I wouldn't even say doors, they're offices that were all decorated and done up. You guys went all out as city departments, oh my gosh, you guys have such great imaginations. We got surprised, there was things hanging from walls and people coming out in scariness, I'm just surprised at all the and overwhelmed by all the imagination and cleverness and all the decorations, it was great to see everybody's um decorations for Halloween, so thank you, that was a treat for sure. And the library had a really good storytelling as well, so thank you for that, that was enjoyable. Um but yeah, the Dia de los Muertos was a great event, it was always well attended, my family enjoys it and always good food, good time, and so thank you, and the State of the City address was awesome, our city's doing so wonderful. Our mayor's so good, thank you.
Councilmember Tucker.
Nothing tonight, madam mayor.
Sticking with status quo.
Yeah, come on.
Mayor. Mayor Pro-T.
Just a couple things, I had the uh honor and privilege to attend the ICSU. The, the International Conference of Shopping Centers in San Diego. Um all I gotta say is there's good things coming to Imperial, so just wait and see. I can't elaborate on it because um we don't get much information, but all we get is uh there's good things coming to Imperial. Uh so that was great, a lot of networking with different businesses and developers, um so. It's good, it's good, I'm, I'm actually, actually excited. Um Fiesta was great and, you know, me and Dennis got to walk around and see all the people and talk and see the crowds, i- it, it was nice. Nice to see people from all over the place coming to Imperial to enjoy what we have here, what we have to offer to our community, so it's nice. And once again, uh the trunk or treat was awesome. Um I just, like, uh Councilmember Baisel Martinez says is. There was a lot of people, there's a lot of people from, you know, people, adults dressed up, to kids, to the dogs were dressed up.
My dog was.
Dressed up, so uh fire, police, thank you guys for being there, everybody, all the departments that were involved, thank you guys very much. Um and yes, the last one, the uh, the offices and the costume contest. And like I said, uh the other day is, when they told us we're gonna go judge the offices. It's gonna be easy, you know, little decorations here or there, wrong. Uh it was difficult, so thank you guys very much for, you know, putting all the effort into it, uh we can only wait and see what's gonna happen next year. So. Um so thank you guys for making our city great, so appreciate all the hard work. Oh, what's that?
I went to Cal City's dinner.
Yeah, I didn't.
You did it, I forgot.
I was in San Diego.
Stacy and I represented, I drew the short stick and had to speak, but yeah.
Get used to it.
And the mayor's uh State of the City was awesome, so.
I was recovering from my State of the City in Austin, Texas with my kiddos uh during that, but. Um but yeah, Dia de los Muertos, thanks to staff, it's so awesome, my kids look forward to every event, so. I mean, yeah, it's a staple in our household, you could say. Um and then yesterday, judge the costume contest, I've never seen so many Jackie Loper impersonators. Nor do I think I will ever see that again, um like. Maybe at your retirement party. Kudos to all the staff, though, and while I was there, Chief Krenshaw, you know, grabbed a couple of his council members and showed us all the new improvements that. They're doing in the police department, so it's really awesome to see um just how taking some pride in your department. Is showing big time, so I look forward to seeing all the final phases come through.
Think as well, so. Part of the.
Yeah, no, I appreciate all the hard work, so. Um and with that, we will adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-two PM. Until the next regularly scheduled meeting on Wednesday, November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM.